3 months, 3 months in October.
October 6th.
Do you know that?
Yeah.
I'll see you there.
No? What do you know? What do you know?
About Tuesday.
Oh, do you follow?
You already see this one's got it, I'm going to say. There's no way that this will come out.
Yeah, this is a lot of like, you mentioned, you're afraid that the public don't have this first. But I just mean that this is a study that we've been through.
Good evening, welcome to the West Jordan Planning Commission meeting for September 15th, 2015. We do have all seven members of the commission present tonight. First item on our calendar is, uh, we have one item on our consent calendar, which is the minutes from our September 1st, 2015 meeting. Mr. Pack.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve the minutes from September 1st, 2015 as contained in the staff report with the one correction on page six, fourth paragraph down, saying Larry Gardner said the city is actively working as opposed to activity working, just for clarity.
Got it. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pack, second by Commissioner Jacob. Any discussion to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Our first public hearing tonight is the Bella Estates Land Use Map Amendment and Rezone, 7481 South, 5490 West. Future land use map amendment and a, uh, change from R1D to R112F. Uh, Boulder Properties, Randy Boulder is the captain. Time is now yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Page to be first on the agenda, up quick.
Very exciting.
Appreciate, uh, being here tonight, representing this application, appreciate your time as commissioners to entertain our application. Uh, just a few comments, as I've gone through the staff report, uh, out of their five findings of fact, I find that four of the, four of the five are favorable to the zoning request of density of house size, request of our application to rezone the property to R112F. On the item, fact finding number A, the one that does show some concern, uh, to me, uh, the concern is more of a development issue nature than the zoning itself and, uh, density. They refer there in, uh, number A to that size and sewer, uh, access and so forth, and those may or may not be discussed tonight. Uh, we recognize that to go forward and develop the property in the event that it is zoned as per our request, that we need to address those development issues for us, all the standard utilities and, uh, roads and access and those types of things. So, I don't know that I have new information, uh, to present other than what's been shown in the staff report. I would entertain any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Boulder? Doesn't look like we have many at this time. Well, we'll save you some time after the public hearing if there's anything you'd like to address from now.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Gardner?
Okay, just to, uh, for the audience, I'll lay out the, um, directions where this at, and I'm sure most of them know where it's at, but the property is outlined in yellow on the screen, is located on 5490 West, which is a, a private street, has been there for probably 30 years or more. Um, and so it's currently a five acre lot, as many of the lots are along 5490 or five acre lots, a rural residential zone in the city, about a quarter of a mile, uh, north of 7800 South, really close to the intersection of 5600 and 7800 South. And the applicant is proposing at this time, as he has said, and you're aware of, to not only change the land use designation from very low density, uh, residential, which allows up to two units per acre, to a low density, uh, designation, and then rezone the property from rural residential, one acre lot minimum, uh, to a R112, so that would be a single family home and a 12,000 square foot lot. And I didn't put on the, the, uh, screen, but it would be an F-size home, so it would be a larger size home. The issue that has led to staff recommending denial based on the staff report is that we, we have to, and Mr. Boulder did bring up, the four of the five criteria have been met, but the ordinance requires all of the criteria to be met, and the one issue is connectivity. Uh, and this is the concept plan at this point that the applicant has submitted, and there's really no connectivity, uh, out to 7530, uh, or at least it hasn't been agreed upon. Now, could that be worked out? Yes. Could the sewer issue be worked out? More than likely. However, that is the, the sole reason for the recommendation to denial, is that this may be premature, uh, at this time, and so that's why, that's what staff recommendation is denial, based upon the ordinance. So, do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for staff?
Commissioner Jacob?
Thank you. Just out of curiosity, who does own 5490 West at this point?
It's under homeowners associations, so all the property owners along 5490 own that street.
And there's no utilities under that?
There is a 16-inch water line that's owned by the City of West Jordan in that street.
And that's all?
Yes. Well, it's an easement.
Thank you.
Very well. Uh, this is public hearing, so we'll open this meeting up to the public. If there's anybody who would like to comment, we would invite you up to the microphone. If you would please give your name and contact information for the public record. Uh, you would have three minutes to make your comments.
Uh, thank you for taking your time. So, my name is Jeremy Fitzgerald. I live just off 5360 and, uh, just on the corner there. Uh, the concern that we have, you go back to that last slide, the one that had the, the road going through, our concern is the road being punched into our neighborhood and the traffic that'll bring into our neighborhood. It was the same concern we had when they tried to develop eight years ago, because what's going to happen is a lot of these five acre lots will develop, and we're concerned that the, the traffic through, we've already got several accidents on the corner here, uh, as you can come around, I think it's 7530, I don't know for sure, is that, at that bend on 5360. We've had already three accidents there. We, we believe that by adding more traffic, it'll create a bigger problem with that, and that is truly our concern. Uh, we did talk to Mr. Boulder last night about the development, and if they were, if there wasn't a through road and this was just a cul-de-sac, it wouldn't create that issue, and I don't know if the city will allow that or not, but really, you can see the concern with the two connector roads plus the one that's left out to 5490, that once that becomes developed, uh, which it will eventually, it'll push a lot of traffic into our neighborhood. And so our concern, more than anything, is that either we deny it on the idea that it needs to come off of 5490, or that it becomes a cul-de-sac, and, and I don't know whether that can be done or not, but I would hope that you would deny it clearly on that, so that we're not adding more traffic into the neighborhood that's already established. So, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Guess we should pick up the cards. Hi, I am Glenn Kinsey, uh, and I do live on the very corner that affects this road, uh, 7530 South, 53, 57 West, and we have had the accidents there. Been woke up to it in the morning, people going too fast, or whatever, they're going around those corners, up the hill, down the hill, just going way too fast. And I, what Chris, or Jeremy had said was, uh, if we open that road up and make it a through road, I, I don't know if that would make, that would make things worse on our corner with the kids flying by there, they're always going down those hills on bicycles, everyone's running in the roads instead of in sidewalks, but I, I'm okay with the idea of a cul-de-sac going in there, and my wife and the other folks I've talked to, but, uh, that's a through street, I just don't know if that would be wise for our little area bringing those people into our old neighborhood. And I thought if it is private property, the, the five acres in 54, 60, or 90, whatever, why couldn't the road come in the other way, from that private road into this development? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Billy Smith?
Hey, guys, thanks for your time. Um, I would love to see that go through just through the neighborhood, I do not want to leave the area, but I want a bigger lot, and that gives you that, but I would really entertain the idea of a cul-de-sac, because you do get rid of it, and then all those other lots prior to that on that same side of the street are all cul-de-sacs, like half acre lots all the way down. Um, but I'd love to see it, and if there's a lot of traffic going down right now, if they're going fast, um, maybe a speed bump issue would be, for right now, if the kids are unsafe, maybe that's another issue, but I would love to see a cul-de-sac going in, because I don't want to leave the area. Thank you.
Thank you. And Spencer Burke?
Thank you for your time. Uh, I also live on 5360. Um, we've lived here for 14 years. Um, I actually work in Clearfield, Utah, so I commute quite a bit, I know that doesn't mean anything to you, but I love our neighborhood, and that's why I haven't moved. Um, but we are looking to expand and grow, and I would love to have a half acre lot. Um, I would love to see this development. I also would love to see a cul-de-sac, um, with that. But, uh, with that, with that, I guess, I, I don't foresee it, if, if you can expand the, the view, uh, of the map, uh, with this, that the traffic that comes from the existing neighborhood, regardless, has to make a choice, so if you see, oops, go back one, so the, on the far right, the red line that comes down, they have to make a choice, right or left, to get out of the neighborhood currently, right now. So, they're either coming down 53, or, sorry, 5530 and coming out of the neighborhood, which this through street, they would still choose that way, either way, regardless. Does that make sense? Oh, okay. Thanks, Randy. So, right here, this is existing neighborhood, so as, as people are coming, neighbors are coming out of this neighborhood, they have to choose to come here and come up Bridle Creek, exit out on 7800, or they come up through here and go out through 7800. So, if you add a street through here, a through street, these people are still going to have to come through this area. Does that make sense? Whether you have a through street or not, that's the only way to exit for these people. There is no reason for anyone here to really use this as a shortcut, if that does go through as a through street. Uh, my preference would be to have a cul-de-sac, obviously, um, but that through street, I don't think brings any more traffic into this, this area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. My name's Press Fitzgerald. I live on 5360, 7550 West, so I face my home with base this property. And so, my thought is, is if you guys are comparing, or if the proposal is to compare the, this land to the other developments of 5490, then the access road should be 5490 if the city requires that. I myself am okay with a cul-de-sac cul-de-sac only, then it would follow suit as the other additional bases in our neighborhood, as you can see. But if there is required side streets that need to come out for double accesses, or two access for fire code, I propose that, I write, I'm against that significantly in regards to 5490 should be the main access point for this neighborhood, so that it doesn't add more traffic to the existing homes. The other thing is, is in talking to Mr. Boulder, he said that cul-de-sac could be done with the land in the way he has the, the lot slated, so I would be, I would be okay with a cul-de-sac as well, that's only additional 16 to 22 cars, period. If you are forced to add another road into here, it's undetermined how much more traffic is now coming through an already existing neighborhood, and as you can see, we already have land, open space that was designated to this neighborhood, and that will be disturbed, that open space is used, and if you have all those connecting into this neighborhood, say to go to church, or to go to the parks, or to whatever, it's just accidents waiting to happen, and too much traffic for a neighborhood that's already existing and quite large. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else that'd like to comment on this?
My name's Brian Redmeister. I live on 5360 West, a little more to the south. Um, I'm, I'm in favor of the zoning change that we're talking about here tonight, uh, because I feel it is, um, it'll match what the neighborhood is currently where I live. Um, I, I fear that in the future, the zoning change that might happen might be less favorable, more of a higher, higher density housing. Um, so I, I feel like this, this zoning change is, is a good thing. Um, I also am in favor of a cul-de-sac, um, that would match the, the two to the south, uh, closer to where I live. Um, I, I think it makes sense to, to face the cul-de-sac going to the east instead of to the west and make it part, part of that neighborhood. Uh, those are the changes that I would like to see in, so I'm in favor of the, of the zoning change, uh, that's proposed tonight.
Thank you.
My name's Brandon Matthews, and I live, uh, down off 7513 off Bridle Creek, which is just down 7530. I'm in favor of this rezone, because, um, I would really like to stay in the neighborhood that I'm in. My kids have grown up here, I have a lot of family, a lot of friends, we're a very close knit community, and this gives me an opportunity to grow a little bit more without having to leave the city. So, from that perspective, I'm in favor of it. As far as the, uh, the cul-de-sac and, and how it's laid out, I think it makes sense from a cul-de-sac perspective, because if you can see a little bit further to the south, it's, there's already precedent set on the other two five acre lots that are set aside with cul-de-sacs, and it only seems natural for me, or to me, to, uh, continue that plan on the other two five that can tie easily into that neighborhood. So, um, I guess that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Last call. And close the public hearing, and, uh, Mr. Boulder, is there anything you'd like to address from the public hearing?
Thank you. Uh, as the commission knows, uh, I'm pretty heavily vested in this area, in property, and we have good neighbors, and we want to continue to have good neighbors there. Uh, this, uh, proposed development really came about, uh, when this particular property became available, and when several of the neighbors approached us about maybe developing it so they could stay in the area. Uh, so, I'm fine, uh, as far as subdivision plot, to either have it be a through street, or rather, or have it be a cul-de-sac, it'll develop either way. Um, I think the question boils down to planning issues and whether, what the city feels as far as connectivity from existing neighborhood in this area, and what will be future neighborhood over here. Uh, so I wanted to just make that clear, that I, I think it could be easily developed either way. We also, uh, in addition to the property that we currently own, uh, would have some aspirations into possibly being involved in future development, in Barbara property, the Tim property, and others in the area. And so, as I look at developing this piece, uh, I also have to look at what may be required, what would be prudent to develop in those areas as well, and so I think it boils down to just what is prudent planning for the area. Uh, what we're proposing on, on this particular site is eight lots, uh, some of them pretty large lots, in the, the size of half acre lots, and, and, uh, two or three of them more in the 12,000 to 14,000 square foot lots. We, I believe the zoning is compatible. I think it, uh, will not at all detract from the existing neighborhood, in fact, probably enhance it, uh, with the lot sizes and the F-size houses that would be built in there. So, really, just a planning issue as far as, uh, connectivity in the neighborhoods.
Any comments?
Thank you. I do have one question. Uh, it seems the sticking point with the, um, staff report and, and really the question isn't so much about the street layout, or whether it's a cul-de-sac, or, or a through street, or any of that, um, or even whether it's single family homes or not, it's, it's really the, the utilities connection, and specifically the sewer, uh, that seems to be kind of the sticking point, in that there is not sewer service available to this parcel as it sits now, well, as it would be subdivided in the future with 12,000 square foot lots. I'm sure the people that live there are going to need one. So, I'm just curious, so what, what do you think is probably the best solution? Would it be running it down 53490, 53490 West, or enlarging the capacity in the neighborhood to the east, and which of those are you most prepared to kind of look at? And as far as bearing the cost of that, how do you, how do you see that playing out?
Good question, and obviously something that needs to be, uh, addressed and resolved. We've met with city staff, engineering department, and other staff members in regards to that. I proposed a couple of other alternate solutions other than the two you mentioned. One, we could put a timed gate valve on the sewer main and have a timed release of sewer during the night. No, I'm just kidding.
If only all the residents would have such a tiny valve installed.
Um, so, as we met as recent as yesterday, uh, with staff, uh, we asked them to relook at the existing sewer system and as far as capacity, and see if there wasn't a tolerance there to add eight additional lots, so that's one thing that they've agreed to do and are looking at doing, and to see where their, their pinch points are in the sewer, to see what, if we went that direction, if there needed to be some upgrading, how extensive that would be and where it would be. So, we're looking at that. Uh, as far as us running the sewer out to 5490 West and south to 7800 South, it's 1,800 feet of sewer, that's not viable for an eight lot subdivision. Uh, and so we're really trying to, to find a good solution that will work going to the east. At some point, as additional property develops on 5490, there'll need to be a sewer main in 5490, but this subdivision would not support that at this point.
Thank you.
So, it seems like there's some questions that are still being resolved, that on some of the points that are being addressed in the staff report. Would it be prudent, or would you be opposed to, uh, to tabling this until those are addressed? And then we can get a kind of a, a full picture?
Uh, that's a possibility. Let me, uh, respond to the question. Um, would there be a problem in going forward with the rezone while we're looking at those issues, knowing that if we don't solve them, the property could end up being rezoned, but not developed at this point? Rezoning doesn't demand eminent development. I would like to, but if, if we can't resolve those, we wouldn't be able to.
So, I think this might hinge off of our discussion in the pre-meeting on how the concept plan should reflect the current mode. Bring us up to speed on that one?
Well, we really want to have concept plans meeting, uh, the requirements of the existing code and development regulations. So, we'd really prefer to have the concept plan showing connectivity and, uh, sort of a commitment as to what is going to be done with the sewer.
Thank you. So, with that in mind, is there, is there anything time pressing that would prevent this from being held until we can address those issues?
Uh, just our contractual timeline that we have on the property, which is beginning to squeeze us a little bit. That's why I'd like the zoning to go forward while we're working out the other issues.
Commissioner Jacob?
The other question that the staff brought up, and it's related to this, um, to the sewer line, is the dedication of 5490 West to the city. Do you have any thoughts on that, or any input as far as when or if that might happen, or what the feeling is of the HOA? Am I assuming you're a member of it, being a property owner on the street?
Uh, I am. The HOA president happens to be here, if you want to have him address that question. But, um, all I can speak for is the property that I own, and, uh, if required and needed, we could dedicate that stretch on our side of the road as we develop that parcel, but would not be able to speak for other property owners.
And that, that would be a requirement of the vision anyway, so.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Reifert?
If I could just take a minute, it's, it's great, we have these public hearings, to have the public show up, and a lot of them don't, uh, have the opportunity to come to these types of meetings, and so, um, just a brief moment of education, tonight we're talking about the rezone, and, uh, we've, we've heard a lot of comments and concerns about interconnectivity and cul-de-sacs and so forth, which are valid concerns. The, the details, though, the interconnectivity won't really, uh, we don't really have the ability to iron out all of those details until the next step. If this indeed goes to the council and gets rezoned, um, the next step would be to come back with a subdivision plot, and we'd hold another public hearing, and at that point, we would talk about cul-de-sacs, uh, stub roads, those types of things. Just in general, uh, planning principles, we, we, um, prefer to see interconnectivity, a more permeable, uh, road network leads to better efficiency. And, uh, for example, if you, if you look at this neighborhood, we have a proliferation of cul-de-sacs, which if you live on the cul-de-sac, it's great, but if you don't happen to have one of those two or three homes on a cul-de-sac, you have increased traffic past your, your front door. And, uh, and likewise, uh, we don't, with the lack of permeability, we, uh, we tend to clog our, our major roads, our, uh, 7800 South, or 5600 West, and so, that becomes a, a, a general thing that we will look at closely as we, if we have the opportunity to proceed, uh, and develop this, this neighborhood. If, if in fact, uh, we see parks and, uh, perhaps churches develop, um, in this general 5490 area, people will want to go and access those facilities, and instead of forcing them back out onto 7800 South, with the higher traffic volumes and so forth, it's better to have that connection through the neighborhoods, um, for, for safety, for convenience, and just for the, for the benefit of the city. So, all of those things will come into play at the next step, but it's good to start the dialogue now, it's good to get the comments from the neighborhood, and, uh, so I just wanted to take a moment and educate the people that showed up tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Jacob?
You knew I'd say something. Um, thank you. Scott, what is the, uh, what is the future plan if the city had its druthers, so to speak, for 5490 West? If it's dedicated, like Mr. Moore said, eventually a sewer line's going to have to go down that road. Um, and, and it will be a capital outlay from the city to put that in. There's already a water line in an easement there. So, I'm, I'm guessing I'm not really asking how much is that going to cost, but what I'm asking is, how does it fit in with the timeline of, we have a, a big old list of capital projects as a city. How, how does, how does that fit in? Or does it, I mean, I, I Or does it, I mean, I imagine right now it's not on the map at all because it's a private road. But someday, it's not going to be a private road, and someday it's going to be developed, and someday we're going to need a sewer someday. And like we talked about last week with the, or two weeks ago with the dairy operation across the street, you know, the agricultural nature of the neighborhood is temporary, and it's going to be developing, as we're saying. And as other property owners have come in, as we've dealt with the other parcels on this street, and they've said, we have developers interested in our parcels. So it's developing, one way or another it's developing. As soon as it's going to have to go in there, I'm just wondering, what's the plan?
Well, the first part of that, my answer to our city engineer, but with due exception, utilities and infrastructure like sewer would be installed and paid for by the developers. And it's a difficult thing when you have a small lot subdivision with significant offsite costs. Hopefully, in the future, we can get a critical mass together, a good chunk of property that we could address that. But you're right, this is a private road, and as such, it's not on our capital facilities plan. Anything else?
That pretty much sums it up. It's a private road, it's not on our capital facilities plan, it's not on our transportation master plan. It's not a collector road, which is the level that we master plan for. So there's no city plans to make any improvements out there, or expend any money out there at this time because we don't collect impact fees to do so for that area, being that it's not on our master plans. So it's the intention currently is that it'll be constructed by development. And as Scott said, it would take some kind of a critical mass, or some kind of a master developer in the area to pull a plan together, to master plan the development.
Is there a sewer line under 5600 West? Sorry, follow-up question. Just five acres to the west here.
I believe there is.
And uphill, but.
Yeah.
Commissioner Reifert?
Regardless of whether we recommend to move this forward, we're still stuck with the sewer situation. And the applicant has said they wouldn't pencil to do, to run that out to 7800. And I can certainly understand that. I guess my question is, what do you think the other option that Mr. Bowler talked about was going ahead and connecting to the current sewer system? What kind of capacity is there, and is there any room to expand that?
The current sewer, when you design a sewer system, you plan it to run at certain levels, and you never plan for it to run completely full pipes, because then you have pipes that become under pressure, and it brings up issues. So you always plan the pipe to run a percentage full. Right now, as we look at sewer flows through direct metering and through modeling, we're at the capacity that we planned for, although those capacities have a little bit of a safety factor, so that you always have a pipe that's not full. The impact of eight lots is going to be very minimal on an eight inch pipe, you know, that runs down there. But the system that we have downstream is at our planned capacity. If we could look at that, we will look at it, and we've committed to the applicant that we will. When we do that, we would come up with several options. One is to look at those eight lots, and that might eat a little bit into your safety factor, and we might decide that that's acceptable, and we could do those eight lots. On the other end, we might decide that we don't want, that we're already into that safety factor far enough that we don't want to jeopardize that any further. And the best thing to do would be to look at each segment of pipe downstream and find out where the pinch points are, where the capacity's at the worst, and do some pipe replacements. And we've done that before in projects where, you know, usually you can identify one or two or three segments downstream that can be upsized with a larger pipe, and that solves the problem. So, you know, there's several things we could do. One other thing that I would caution is that, you know, the impact of eight lots is probably quite minimal. But based on the concept plan that's been shown, we're looking at stub streets that go north and south, and as soon as you create stub streets to undevelop properties, then you've got, now you've got property owners who want to continue on the development. So those eight lots become 16 or 24. And, you know, so the problem really needs to be addressed. And if we're going to add eight lots, that may be one thing. But how do we ensure that that eight lots doesn't become additional?
How long would you anticipate it'll take if you make those projections and get back to developers?
Oh, within a few days, a week or so at the most. It's basically done with modeling. If we have to send out and set some meters, then that'll take a little bit longer, some flow meters in the pipes.
I think I mentioned this already, but I'm kind of in favor of pushing this off until we have all of the questions answered that we need. Commissioner Pack?
Oh, thanks, Mr. Chair. I would concur with you. It's not that I'm opposed to development, it's just it seems a bit premature, a cart before the horse. And with this being a quasi judicial matter, it's not a matter of if we like or don't like. It's objective criteria versus subjective. And from an engineering, planning, and legal standpoint, we've heard, you know, findings of fact here. And I agree, the concept planning to meet the code and not necessitate huge cost of infrastructure to see. And so I would concur, I think it would be in the best interest of all to wait until we have further information and further options. Otherwise, at this point in time, I would concur with staff that it would be a negative recommendation as opposed to because we just don't have the information and infrastructure to carry this forward.
Commissioner Skoski?
Well, I agree. I think at this time, we don't have enough information. So I'd like to make a motion that we table the item until it's ready to, until we have all of the information, like a more dedicated site plan that would show what kind of sewer access will absolutely be necessary, and until we have the information from the city engineer.
Would it be feasible to do that on our October 6 meeting, to have that information?
Yeah, we can do it. We can do a capacity analysis by then, for sure.
Two weeks? October 20?
We have three weeks before the next one.
Oh, three weeks, okay. Is that okay to?
Yeah, I meant it to October 6.
I'll second that. Any discussion of that motion? Commissioner Jacob?
I was actually leaning towards approving the rezone and family, or the future land use map just because, like Mr. Bowler said, it doesn't necessitate an immediate development to have a rezone. We have property zoned all over the city, all kinds of different things that may or may not ever be developed that way because of utility lines. So that's what I was leaning towards, however I do see the wisdom of wait until we have all the information.
Commissioner Pack?
Oh, thank you. It was more a comment and a question. You're just saying that I'm grateful that staff can do a quicker turnaround time. This way it doesn't negatively impact Mr. Bowler mentioning up against the gun a little bit in terms of trying to develop. But then we're not jumping the gun either. It seems like a win-win situation as opposed to forwarding a negative recommendation that this would allow us to table it.
Commissioner Green?
What I was going to say is, I think I agree with Commissioner Jacob, as he's mentioned earlier, on the big hangup. Really here is the sewer. I think there are a couple of minor things, like the the connection across the parcel dedicated to the city that's already landscaped. I'm not sure that I'm a fan of that particular idea. But I think the largest sticking point here is the sewer. And I'd like to see the capacity studies. You know, when you look at this property, if we develop that one, the one to the south is the one, to me, the one to the south is going to be the concern. If we add that, that one's going to want to go out to the east too. To me, you know, where everything else makes sense to go 5490. So I'd like to see the capacity studies as well, and see where we're at with the numbers that makes sense, not only with the capacity of the eight lots here, but maybe some modeling on what happens with the south, that south piece of property, if it goes four or five lots, where does, you know, and where the modeling would take us on a couple of those pieces of property. And I think I'd like to see that too.
Commissioner Pack?
Oh, thank you. And I don't necessarily disagree with what's been said by Commissioner Jacob or Commissioner Green. I'm just going to play devil's advocate. Is there any reason to push that part through tonight? Just for me, I'd like to see it all in one package. Would there be any problem, would it be too lethargic pushing that back? I don't see how that would negatively impact a timeline, waiting three weeks until we hear from Mr. Nelson. Or am I missing something on that, that there is any reason to need to do that?
My only thought on that is that this is just a recommendation, it's not a final approval anyway. So it's going to be a week, or two weeks, or three weeks before it comes to the city council anyway. That's my only thought. I'm fine with it coming back to us as well.
Commissioner Skoski?
Thank you. I just feel like it's our duty to protect the health, welfare, and safety of the people in that community. And at this, we don't have enough information to make that decision. And so I just think that we should table it until we have that information.
Commissioner Reifert?
I have to respectfully disagree in that if we do make the recommendation, it gives the applicant the opportunity to move forward with his other work that needs to be done, and continue on with that. The city council could put the kibosh on that too, and stop everything. By us sending a positive recommendation, I think it will help the applicant. And I also think that it will, you know, it wouldn't make any difference anyway, because it's going to come back to us anyway afterwards, and then we'll be able to see the capacity of the sewer, and then at that point, so that's my thought.
Commissioner Quiney?
Thank you. I wanted to say I agree a little with what Commissioner Reifert's saying. I think that, you know, what Commissioner Skoski has said is protecting the interests of the city, we also, I think, we need to be looking at protecting the interests of the applicant. And he did mention that there's a financial push on him to get this going as well. And we're not changing anything by forwarding the recommendation, I think. And I agree with what Commissioner Reifert's suggesting.
Commissioner Pack?
Oh, thank you. Just the other devil's advocate again, I'm always trying to figure out from both sides, so I'm not missing anything. Once approved, then it's harder to go back and disapprove. So that would be my only concern.
Commissioner Skoski?
No, that's right, thanks.
Thank you. Just to play that side again, is that, you know, if we do forward a positive recommendation here, and the applicant goes through and spends a lot more money to, you know, show us a flat, and then two weeks from now comes back from the engineering department that it's not going to work, then the applicant spends all that money to develop this flat for no reason. So I guess my point is, I feel like at this point, I've said it before, we don't have enough information to reasonably say that this is feasible. So I'm going to stick with my original motion to table the item.
So I think we've all had a chance to speak at least once or twice here, so we'll call the question on that. We've got a motion, and a second. Motion by Commissioner Skoski, second by Commissioner Laws. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Motion carries five to two, with Commissioner Jacob and Heiner casting the dissenting votes. The next item on our agenda, item number three, the text amendment for conditional use in the professional office zone. The applicant has asked that that be pulled for now. We do need a motion for that. Commissioner Bean?
I move that we postpone that to a future date to yet be determined.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Green, second by Commissioner Jacob. Discussion of that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. The last item on our agenda is amend the West Jordan Municipal Code, section 13-5B-7 to allow swine in a rural residential zone subject to the animal point system. We lost a lot of our audience.
Not everybody.
They're not interested in this law.
Some of them like pigs.
Mr. LeFey, for you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. During our city council meeting in August, the council directed staff to take a look at the possibility of amending our rural residential zone to potentially allow for swine. So based on that direction, we've been able to do some research. Our current code, I don't expect you to read this, but this is from our staff report. The points to be taken out of all of the verbal GC on your screen is that the animal, the keeping of animals is limited to a point system, 20 points, 20 animal points per 10,000 square feet in a rural residential zone. And, you know, that's the basic formula. And then there's an exception worked in here that states that it does not include offspring of large and medium sized animals. You can go through the reasons why there. In addition to all that text, there's a little table that outlines or categorizes the points per type of animal. We've got three different categories, large, medium, and small, and you can see the point system allocated. Over the years, we've kind of honed these points based on experience here in the city, experiences from other municipalities. And so you can see 17 points for large animals, eight points per animal for medium sized animals, and then one for the smaller sized animals and fowl, such as chickens and ducks and so forth. So this boils down to approximately 44 points per half acre. And you can see how that kind of, those numbers kind of crunch out fit to be. And so that gives you a general idea of what you could expect in a rural residential point five neighborhood or property. Okay. This is a map of the city of West Jordan. We've highlighted around all the rural residential zones, so we can, again, just as a reminder, this is a text amendment which would affect every rural residential zone property in town, not just a particular neighborhood. So the proposal was to potentially allow for swine to be on par with cows and horses in a rural residential zone. So this table compares average size cow, average size horse, and average size swine, and, you know, manure per day output, and then potential offspring. I've highlighted, you know, the potential offspring for swine is much, much higher. And that factored into the proposed amendment that you'll see in your staff report. As a reminder, regardless of what may or may not be changed by our city council with this text amendment, we already have in place existing code that acts as a safety net. that acts as a safety net to for animal use in the city. Not just for farm animals, but for dogs and cats if you are an irresponsible animal owner and create a nuisance. We have these existing code sections that we have the ability to go in and mitigate those nuisances up to the removal of the animals from the property if you're abusing that right. And just as a side conversation and something to consider as we discuss this text amendment tonight, zoning ordinance is, it's a delicate balance between allowing people to use their property in a way they choose versus the use of your property impacting your neighbor. And so this really has a lot of interplay, especially when we're dealing with animals that could produce odor and dust and noise and potential nuisances. So the animal point system, I believe, and this is just my opinion, has served our rural residential zones quite well over the years. It's preserved that rural nature and it's allowed for our citizens to exercise a unique right that typically you don't find in a suburban community. And the proposal to add swine possibly to our rural residential districts seems to fit with what we've already established, with a few exceptions, with a few extra parameters, which I want to highlight on the screen right now. As I've done the research both online and in the field, the general consensus that I've been able to find is that the more animals, shocker, the more animals you have on the property, the more impact you possibly have on your neighbor. Yeah, I know. Mind blown. But as I looked at the potential, you know, possible caps, limitations on number of swine on property, the number two seemed to come out and stand out. And so you'll see in the proposed text amendment here on your screen that there's a little notation here that notwithstanding the number of points per animal and the size of property, there shall be no more than two swine per lot. Breeding and/or birthing swines expressly prohibited. Again, as I was able to do the research, it was evident that the minute you allow for breeding or birthing a swine on a property, you have the potential for odor to increase. And also the safety, safety concerns seem to crop up as well. A sow with piglets is very protective. And it would be a tragedy if, you know, we had somebody hop the fence and erroneously jump into a pen and encounter an angry mother. Typically, if you have a pig that is breeding or is able to get birth, it's going to be a little bit larger than a pig that you keep just for a season for butcher. And so the size and potential impact of the animal increases if you actually allow them to reproduce. So that is a good starting point. This was an eye opening experience for me. And I would appreciate any discussion that we can have tonight. We'd like to get a formal motion by the commission tonight so we can forward this on to their city council.
Commissioner Jacob.
Just a quick question, Scott. Birthing, breeding implies intent, right? Birthing, is that breeding without the intent? Much like man's water?
So the reason why I included both references, you can have, you can take your animal off site and have them, you know.
Birth all they want, right.
Right. Or you can take them off site to be inseminated and bring them back. And so this just kind of covers all potential options there.
So it's basically keeping a mother with baby pigs out of the situation.
Right.
So if you have, if you're two swine that you have and it takes two to tango, have them be one of each kind. You may have inadvertent birthing whether you like it or not. Except once you find out that that's on its way, you should take it somewhere else.
Yeah, you want to remove that from the, from.
That's what I wanted to check.
Commissioner Skoski.
So with that, if you can take it somewhere else and then you can, in the city code, it says that the offspring or baby animals are not prohibited. Is it then a potential to have twenty-three piglets with mama there? Or is that, because if you can take, if you can take it off, if you can breed off site and you can birth off site, those piglets would then probably have to come back.
Remaining and so forth. Right. I see that loophole and this is why we have discussions, right? Based on the information I received, that's a situation where I would not like to inject that into a half acre piece of property.
Right.
So if we want to, if you want to propose additional language or restrictions.
I absolutely would. I would, I would say that we would have to add a language that you cannot raise animals.
The keeping of offspring.
Just a baby pig should count for that as an exception.
Yeah. Excuse me, because it would only apply to the swine because that's applicable, that's not applicable for the other.
Right.
Up to twelve months.
Exactly. So we would just add that, tack that on if you so choose, under the notation there. So it wouldn't impact the other animals currently in the code.
Commissioner Quiney.
Since my knowledge of farm animals is limited to four chickens, you got me stuck on chickens, by the way.
You can have five.
I know, but I got four because one of them ended up missing, by the way. Raccoons, cattle, or something. What makes the, I know that there's, we kind of talked about this in the pre-meeting. You know, a pig is two hundred and twenty pounds average, fourteen pounds manure a day. Yeah, it does a lot of offspring. But why, if they have the same restrictions as a horse or a cow and they're actually slightly smaller and produce less manure, what would make them stink more? I just don't know enough about pigs. What would make them stink more than a horse or a cow?
Well, that's a good question. I would never pretend to be an expert on swine. I've learned quite a bit through this process. But because this is a public hearing, I'm assuming that we've got people in the audience that may be able to.
We will wait and see that, and see that at the end.
Commissioner Pack.
Thank you. Well, at the bottom of page two on the staff report, the last word saying enforceable. You know, it makes me think that through this whole staff report, I haven't read any language about enforceability. Because I assume that someone could have, let's say, two pigs and have that smell more than five pigs if the five pig owner is very good at upkeep and maintenance. And so I'm just wondering if we're missing something by only allocating points and numbers versus some way of enforcing the manner in which they're cleaned up after. Did I miss something in the staff report on that?
We do, through the other nuisance ordinances, or anybody can call in complaints.
Okay, yes.
So that's already existing.
But then if the owner is still within the parameters of the points, I guess technically they're not violating anything. But if someone complains, how do you quantify that? Well, on a scale of one to ten, it smells seven point five and we only allow a seven or Euro factory organ is better than mine.
We have highly trained animal control officers.
Okay, so that's my question is when someone calls and complains and says it stinks, well, can you quantify that stink? Is it too stinky? So that's just my question, this one, seeing all of this objective criteria on points. And yes, there is a complaint nuisance issue. Can you address that issue? Or do we have anything to go off there?
I will check with our animal control officers. I do not go out and force those types of nuisance complaints. Obviously, for noise, we have decimal readings and so forth, but for odor, I can't answer that.
And thanks for bringing up that example. Either you have decimal readings or the weeds are this tall and we only let them be this tall. But there's not really anything that you can apply to smell. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? First half, West Jordan. Very good. We'll open the screen to the public. If there's anybody who would like to comment, you'll have three minutes. And if you would kind of give us your name and contact information.
My name is Chad Sheppich. I'm a resident actually by the property that Mr. Bowler was talking about rezoning. So I'm in favor of this change. I actually currently have animals on my property. I have a cow and I've got some sheep. I want to address a couple of questions that came up about smell and those types of things. Now, every animal has a distinct smell. You can smell, a horse is different than a cow and a cow is different than sheep. Dogs happen to be different than those. Goats and a male goat, which I could have five of those, by the way. We would not be able to stand in this room if we had one of those. So the smell issue is something that I think needs to be thought about under the nuisance and not under a point system. Because a male goat that is getting ready to breed, if you smell one, is very, very pungent. So I have relatives and friends that have raised pigs for many years. Pigs are actually cleaner than any of the other animals. They will do their business in one spot. They don't do it where they eat and they don't do it where they sleep. So from a cleanliness perspective, they can be taken care of much easier, much more easy than any other farm animal, in my opinion. Something I would like to talk about is in the point system. Now, pigs are a social animal. So you really, if you're going to raise one, you need to raise two because they'd be kind of like having a kid live by themselves in the house and have no contact with any other human. So important to have the ability to have two of those. My proposal is that the proposal be that you're allowed to have two pigs, but get them the category that they deserve and that's a medium sized animal. If you're going to raise one to eat, which really, this is what this addresses, is raising an animal to eat. Having a child, raise it for a four age project. They're not going to get more than two hundred and fifty pounds. It takes about six months to get it to that size. So to give it even the same point system as a cow or a horse doesn't make a lot of sense. It's a quarter of the size, the output, you've already seen those numbers. So I think it would be a good change to allow that as an amendment to that. So I would encourage the commission to move forward with that. I support that. So thank you.
Anybody else like to comment?
My name is Matt Tippett. I'll just echo what Mr. Sheppich said. I live on Tico Drive in a rural residential area. And I also have animals on my property for the purpose of raising food for my family. I have two cows and a number of chickens. And it's been a great experience for myself and for my family. A couple of points that Mr. Sheppich made that I'll echo. I believe that the, I'm in favor of this. I'd like to be able to have the opportunity to raise a variety of meat animals, swine being one of those. But I believe that they ought to be in the medium sized animal category as well. My experience with swine has been limited, but visiting some locations, even up on the five acre lots that were discussed earlier, there's a company up there, Utah Natural Meats, that raises swine there. And visiting that property has shown me that, I don't believe that swine smell any worse than cows or horses. So I am in favor of this and I would love to see that go forward and to see the pigs classified as a medium, not a large animal. Thank you.
I'm Brian Dinsley. I live on fifty-four ninety west. This would also affect us currently. I'm probably one of the smaller lots on fifty-four ninety west. I also would like to raise animals to feed my family. However, what interests me more about the pigs is the smaller size. Cows being so large, I don't want to use up as much as maybe a couple of cows would. And so because of that, I would also be interested in this. I did have, I've lived next to most of all of these all my life and I've never had any issues with the smell with more from one or another. Obviously, depending on how clean and how the area is kept, could affect it. And having one or two, I wouldn't see having any issues. That is something I'd be interested in. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. I had left the building not realizing this was on the agenda, should have looked closer. I'm not well versed in what the proposal is, but I couldn't be here and have a farm discussion going on and not come to the podium. So just a couple of comments. You're aware, we do raise and deal a lot with swine and grateful for the opportunity to do that and thank you for that opportunity. My comment tonight would be, we need to be careful we don't miscategorize swine, as has been mentioned tonight. They're not the filthy, crummy animal that oftentimes are characterized to be improperly cared for. They're a clean animal. And some of you, I think, have been out to our farm and seen that. And so I think the issue really is the proper care of them. And otherwise, gosh, we're very much in favor of them and would be in favor of this application. Thank you.
Ben Southworth, it's good to come talk to you today. And I will tell you how much I enjoy watching the meeting from this side. Oh, it's fun. Zach, good luck. I just really quickly wanted to, a couple of things. We talked about the smell and I think the city's come up with a pretty technical way to determine smell, Commissioner Pack. It's called something that everybody can relate to. It's called the Pampers diaper scale. No, I'm kidding. There's not really anything. But we have, it is a good question. And when we first amended and changed, this was a few years going back, we talked about amending and changing the overall point scale. We really revamped everything. That was one of the questions we had. And the nuisance ordinance really is that overarching piece that really can address anything. You know, I wish that, you know, I have a couple of dogs and I sure wish, and I raise sheep too. And it was mentioned that pigs, you know, they're like a cat. There's like one spot that they're going to go, right? Well, a cat's not one spot. That's a bad example. But they have a spot they want to go, right? My sheep, you know, if they got to go, they're right in their water or food. They don't, they're just dirty. My dogs are the same way, you know? Probably all have dogs and you step it and they're gone. I wish that my dogs were as clean as a pig was. You know, that's a good way to look at it and think about this. But really what this is about, it's about four H and dinner table projects. And that's why I think it's very reasonable to say that a limit of two makes a lot of sense. Limit it no more and there will be no breeding, there will be no birthing. Because that's not the intent. The intent is for a four H project for a kid or something to get a young pig to learn how to raise and care for an animal and all that takes place. There's a lot of life lessons that could happen there. And you get those as young and really, the life cycle is, you know, if you keep one for eight months, you're probably keeping it too long, first of all. So really, it's a short life cycle and that's what we're intending here. I would suggest, as we talk, I talk to folks and we look at this, something that probably makes more sense is, I think we could do this with. that probably makes more sense is, I think we could do this with, uh, changing two words. We went to the medium-sized animals and we, after the comma, if we remove the words "but not," that's probably the only change we need to make. And then, and then put in those two, um, stipulations that it can't be more than two and there is no birthing and what have you. So that it would read medium animals such as sheep and goat, goats including, uh, standard, I don't know if it needs to be standard-sized pigs. I don't know what standard-sized means. So maybe you'd remove that as well. But, but that would be a suggestion. The other reason when we, when we revamped this, I gotta hurry, I got 15 seconds, when we, seconds, when we revamped this, we set cows and horses at 17. The, the idea was that if you had two cows and horses, you might have a couple of chickens or something like that. We were gonna go 20, but we wanted to give you that headroom. And the same reason applies, a pig isn't a large-sized animal. And if you have two pigs and you're at 16 points, maybe you wanna have room to have a sheep or maybe you have a small flock of chickens. And by putting them at medium, that allows you to do that. So thank you for your time and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Anybody else like to comment on this?
If you did your time.
Time's up. Well, then close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. So Scott, that brings up a really good point. So in the, in the current code, it does have them lumped into the medium animal section. What are the, what are the pros and cons of leaving that there and keeping the limit at two swine?
Well, uh, you know, I, I think the, I think Councilmember Southworth, uh, did a good job at explaining the, the pros of putting in the medium category. You'd have the option to have, uh, a variety of animals on the property. If, if you, uh, were worried about impact though, if, if you were worried that, uh, even with two swine, two swine plus additional animals would be more than, than what your neighbor would, would characterize the smell, then that would be a con. But, uh, I won't pretend to be an expert on that. Um, if, if, uh, the commission and the council decide to, to allow appropriate flexibility with a variety of animals on the property, then, then we could look at pulling it in. I mean, as I did there, the research, obviously the, the manure output for swine is a lot less than horses and cows. Uh, the size is a lot smaller, uh, than horses and cows. So, as you look at our current code, obviously we categorize them as a medium-sized animal. So, um, I think that's all I need to say.
We didn't have manure comparisons against the other medium-sized animals though.
True.
Should we table this till we can read back?
Commissioner Pack.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, well, just some thoughts.
I remember a couple of years ago, incident to a application by Mr. Bowler. At, when, when I was new to the commission, I, I went out, checked out operations calls and state officials and they all concurred that pigs are cleaner than other farm animals, even though the general public perception is they play in the mud and they're dirty. And as we've discussed on page three of the staff pack up with the average animal weight, manure per day and offspring potential table, that that is interesting how much lower the swine manure output is. Real interesting conversation, right? Swine output, uh, is compared to the other large animals that are here. And it gets me thinking about, I, I wish that there were the, the Pampers' O-Meer because the problem is you could have a neighbor who might be really against having farm animals. Well, you have one, two, five, whatever and they could say, well, it smells, I don't want the code enforcement out here. It, it's just so hard because if they're, if they're negative towards it and there's no objective criteria against which to, which to ascertain if that neighbor's just complaining because they don't like animals or they're complaining because it really does sting too much, gosh, it makes it, it makes it hard no matter what the point value is. So, I, I just wish that there were some other option to make it objective versus subjective. But also at this point, I would be in favor of, well, as section 13-5B-7 says, medium animals such as sheep and goats, including pigs. It, it just makes, it just makes sense to me because that way you safeguard the property owner's rights versus the neighbor still being in the city of a good neighbor, you know, not sleeping too much. It is just my thoughts for this.
But you could get those same complaints with somebody who owns chickens, somebody who owns a dog and animal control is still need to address on that.
Right, and that's what I say. If you have a yappy dog and it's keeping up at night or, well, at one, I know there's ordinances against yappy dogs and all this, but, but, gosh, smell is just so subjective and, and so that I, maybe, I'm just wondering if maybe we're missing the vote a little bit in this and just focusing on the points per animals, but at least in that regard.
I think though, there is a way, there is a way to do this and, and going back to the manure. You know, you could put something in the code that said, um, no more than 28 pounds of manure could be on-site per day, you know? I mean, that, that would make it so that someone was having to clean up after those animals daily. I don't know how fine-tuned we wanna get with this, but.
That's a skill.
It is a way to make it finite, but, but I don't know that that's to the scope of the intent that, that we're trying to reach here. I think, you know, chickens smell bad if you don't maintain them. I think, you know, any animal, dogs, I have a, a neighbor dog that sometimes they let it go too long and it's a nuisance. So, um, in a sense, you know it when you smell it. And, and I think that that's why we have, uh, we have code enforcement officers that are granted that leeway, you know? So, you know.
Are they granted that leeway?
I wouldn't say that they would be if they're, and I don't know, are they granted the leeway that they could state that it's a nuisance if it smells too bad?
Well, in answer to the specific question, there's also, uh, there's always prosecutorial discretion. But I think if there were examples in the city of good swine management, that would, the, the code enforcement would be wise to say, okay, let's compare that good management example to the complained of property. And that, uh, I don't think that it would be that much of winging it. There would be a standard to look at and say, okay, you're deviating from this standard in X, Y, and Z ways.
If I may, this is, uh, I, Buddy brought this up because it'll allow me to, to do some research between now and when this gets to the council, but, um, there are meters, sensors that, that measure, you know, parts per million, uh, you know, the particulates in, in, they, you know, the olfacto meter is, I guess, the official term. Uh, I don't know if we employ the use of olfacto meters here, uh, in West Jordan, uh, but I think in the absence of that, uh, I think Mr. Thorpe, uh, has presented a good, a good solution too.
Perhaps we can apply that to the sewer discussion for never.
For sure, Craig.
I, I tend to, I tend to, as I've heard this and I'm trying to, I'm, I'm doing my homework down the side of my, uh, down the side of my, uh, notes here. I, I tend to think that we ought to look at these pigs as medium animals with about an eight-point scale. And here's, here's my rationale for that. Is that if we include them with how, cows and horses, uh, and I, I don't have a half-acre piece of property, so I, I don't know what people normally have. But if we put, if we had, if you put two, two pig, two swine on a, on a half-acre property, you can't have a horse or a cow. You can have a couple of ducks and a couple of geese and a couple of chicken, you can't have a horse and a cow. And as we heard the testimony where, where people's saying, hey, look, we wanna have a, a, some sort of balance of if we're raising a cow and we want some, you know, we want some beef and we want some pork, you gotta have a couple. And, and so it almost, it almost makes, it almost makes sense to say that they're a median, to say they're a medium animal at eight points and, and ma, and max them out at the two. And that will allow you to have a horse, it'll allow you to have a cow based on the numbers, but it'll also allow you to have some chickens and ducks and chin chills, I think, you know? Never mind. You know, pigeons, rabbits, you, you know, you, you could have a, you know, a partridge in a pear tree, but the, I think the point is, I, I, I'd rather see him moved to the medium category and assigned an eight-point category and just call, and then just limit, uh, the two swine per lot and, and the breeding and the birthing. And just move him to the medium category on here. And then I agree with Commissioner Sokowski, I think we need to put in the middle of there that when it talks about the offspring, that that's, um, that this, the swine offspring is specifically included, excluded in that, in one of those lines down there. But I, I'm in, you know, we've heard what, what the, what the residents have said, most of them agree that they're a medium animal. I'd rather go, I'd rather just see a medium animal, just almost like what Commissioner Fairway and Councilman Southworth said, just, they're already defining the code as medium, let's just take it out of the "but not including" and allow the pigs to be there.
Yep. Mr. Jacob.
It's almost a moot point now, but, um.
Moot?
No, my question's for Mr. Thorpe. Um, in this code where it has, the language is "such as," so we have large animals such as horses and cows, medium animals such as sheep and goats, and small animals such as chicken, et cetera. Uh, I would assume, and I only play a lawyer on TV, um, that the "such as" leaves open other small animals or other medium-sized animals or other large animals that aren't specifically excluded like the swine are.
Camels.
Llamas.
For example.
Alpacas.
Camels and alpacas.
I would read it the same way you do.
Thank you. I, I was just making sure I was reading that right. So we could just strike out the whole exclusionary part about not including standard-sized pigs for that matter. Because "such as," sheep and goats would include a standard-sized, standard-sized pig.
Or just put "such as" sheeps and goats and pigs and that gives us a ballpark of what we're looking at.
As long as you don't get the extra-large pig.
That's right.
I think we have to leave pigs in there though, where we have a no patient.
We'd probably do it at this point.
Specifically reference to swine.
Yes, I agree.
I think it needs to say it.
I was just curious about alpacas really.
Yeah.
Ostrich.
Unless there's any other further discussion, I, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion. Uh, that we forward a positive recommendation to City Council for, uh, the proposed text amendment with a couple of edits, moving, uh, so leaving it, everything as is in the table, just striking the "not including standard-sized pigs" and just leaving it as "such as sheep, goats, and pigs." And then adding the note one at the bottom with an addition of, uh, breeding, birthing, or weaning of swine is expressly prohibited. Is that, oh, we'll talk about it in a second.
No, that won't work.
Oh, second.
Weaning is.
Second for discussion.
So motion by Commissioner Law, second by Commissioner Jacob, discussion finished by Commissioner Scott.
Weaning is strictly the, the point where you separate a baby from its mother. So, we would have to specifically say, um, no offspring.
Right, cause then at that point you could still have it up to 12 months.
Up to 12 months, right. The weaning process.
So it would have to be the section of code that mentions the 12 months that we.
Right, so maybe with an amendment that says, "no offspring of swine."
So changing that, Scott, with this word, "breeding, birthing, or offspring of swine is expressly prohibited." Would we need to address that in that other section where we?
I guess, uh, you know, offspring, I'm just trying to think of any potential pitfalls to that.
Breeding, birthing, or keeping of offspring.
Well, it's, it's a matter of a mother and offspring because you can't exclude a baby.
Yeah, mother and offspring.
You could say.
Because a, a property owner will get, uh, you know, a 50-pound pig in the springtime, which is the offspring of, you know, some other animal. I, I just don't wanna.
Um, birthing.
I know I'm, I'm, I'm grasping at straws here, but I get false every day with people who are, uh, testing the code, so.
In theory, you could have a, you could have a mom and one, one baby pig that they gave all 22 other ones away and it'd still be legal if we.
That's true.
That's true.
I guess we could, there's probably a term for breast-giving swine.
Generational, there's a generational component here. We don't want a mother and its baby.
Yeah, but again, we, we're capped at two. If we keep the, the, the sentence before that, we're locked at two regardless.
Right.
If you have a mother and a baby, they're.
If you don't, you're. Well, but the, the city code states that currently that the offspring are not included, so.
That, that's true. We, we should, we should, we should clarify that that includes offspring.
And maybe that's just the, uh, right here where it says, "there shall be no more than two swine per lot, including offspring."
Yeah.
All right, well, I will amend my motion to, uh, so that will say, "there shall be no more than two swine per lot, including offspring, breeding and or birthing of swine is expressly prohibited."
I would second that.
Okay, so revised, uh, motion is out on the table. Mr. Green.
Well, I just was gonna bring up the question of why do we have to cap this at two when we're not capping any of the breeding animals at two? That just, that just, I mean.
It's a really good question.
I, I know that the point was brought up earlier about mother pigs are more aggressive. Are they really that much more aggressive than a goat or a sheep?
Well, you can't have the kids anyway. That's what I was starting to go. Piglets. My house did the same thing.
So I'm, I'm just curious, is it simply, are we saying no more than two simply because we don't wanna have aggressive female pigs in the neighborhoods? I mean, I don't understand why we're limiting just pigs at two and not the rest of the animals.
So we may have some, some expertise in the audience that none of us can provide if we're interested in suspending the rules for a short period of time.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Southworth, please enlighten us.
Thank you. Uh, two things real quick. The reason why it's, was, this is not Scott's, um, fault, he's done an awesome job. The direction that I initially gave him just was to put them in with large animals after further review and thinking about it. That's why it made more sense. Otherwise, you know, if we thought about it a little bit longer, we would've went with medium from the first, from the get-go, so, um, so anyway, so that's that. Now, uh, your question is, um, why not more? And it's just simply because of everything that you've already expressed or said, is that the pigs have a bad rap and, um, they're scary because nobody knows what they are. Nobody knows what it's like. And so it is a very safe thing to say, okay, let's just start with a limit of two because we don't want to have some, uh, unforeseen impact. Now, let's do, and I'll give an example, say our chicken ordinance. The chicken ordinance was the same thing. We said five. Let's limit to five in normal residential areas back then. Now we should probably look at that again and say, all right, animal control, have we had any, um, you know, problems? Well, the answer is no, by the way, we haven't. So maybe it shouldn't be five, maybe it should be eight, maybe it should be ten. Pigs, pigs were kinda looking at it the same way. Let's start off with two, let's limit it at two, let's give us a couple of years under our belt and see what kinda impact this has. And we might find out, you know, two was enough. And we might find out, you know, nobody even notices or cares. Maybe four was the magic number, or three was the magic, who knows? But it was a very safe, um, place to begin. So it, there's no science behind it. We didn't consult any agricultural experts or go to the, you know, any extension offices in Iowa or Nebraska or Call of USU or what have you. It was just a safe place to begin. Uh, hopefully that helps. You have any other further questions or?
Well, why couldn't we just count the offspring as eight points apiece and then we could say, hey, there's five pigs. We got a mom and a dad and three piglets and.
You, you could, but, um.
Well, I mean, if that is, you're raising them for projects, then you're moving mom and dad onto the next thing or the babies are getting moved.
Yeah, but except, except for, if you remember the chart there on the number of babies in Horson County here is one, a pig is, you know, you, you could have upwards of 14, 15, 16, uh, babies at once, you know? And then, and then what do you do? And we can, it kinda opens the door to literally the floodgates. And I don't know if you recall what happened just recently down in Provo? When a, I don't know what you call it, a herd of pigs, I guess it's a herd, gets out, that's a mess. If you saw some of the pictures of people's yards. And so two's very safe. And, and that's really where, but, but I, I like your thinking there, you know? Why, I don't tend to like to over-legislate things, you know? Make it a little bit easy, that's why it's, you know, it's, it's simple.
I'm just looking at it from an angle because it seems like we're creating, um, you just come back in two or three years to say, okay, where are we at? Like talking about with chickens. Just figure we make it, make it available now.
You know, the potential for impact two is, is, it's pretty minimal at two. Uh, makes for good neighbors as well. Uh, but, but it's a good question. Why don't we limit to goats? If, uh, Chad had mentioned. If, uh, Chad had mentioned, if you smell a, a, a male goat who, when it comes to breeding season, he urinates on himself for the, you know, prior three weeks, and boy, is he pungent. You know, he, he'll smell worse than a whole herd of, you pick your animal, pretty bad. But we don't limit those. And so I think it's a very fair point, um, and I'm not telling you what the right answer is, I really don't know. Only I'm telling you that two was just a safe place to start.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for our resident expert?
Thanks for that information.
Thanks for the, thanks for the information. Uh, look, Commissioner Beck.
So, but we are still saying that in your motion, just wanted to clarify that the note still stands that we can't breed or, or swine anyway. Is that correct?
Correct.
But then, okay, so that means that you either need to have two males or two females.
Or take them somewhere else.
Or take them somewhere else, because then you can't wean or birth.
Or have the kids.
Or have the kids at all on your property. Right back to that big answer, okay. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Sockowski.
Just, uh, one other point that was brought up earlier, and I don't know if everybody remembers, because this, this, uh, offspring kind of keeps coming back with the medium animal thing, and that's just that, um, it's known that a mama pig with babies is dangerous, and that's the whole thing getting behind that part of it, so, yeah.
That's next.
We'll get there. Large animals such as.
Thank you. And since we're setting the rules, I'm just wondering if Mr. Bowler would have anything else to add, because I know he's, uh, very well versed on pigs as well. Would you concur again that the statement that pigs are cleaner than other animals is true in, in general, and/or do you concur with Councilmember Southworth's assessment that two pigs is a good starting number in, in your regard for the average person trying to maintain pigs?
Please.
To address that, let me ask you a question. As I read the application, it says all swine pigs in rural residential zones, uh, there are different lot sizes in rural residential zones, uh, and so are we saying that we'd have no more than two pigs if it's a half acre lot as well as an acre lot, or as well as a five acre lot, because five acre lots come under rural residential as well? It seems to me that if we're gonna put a limit, that it ought to be somehow in conjunction with the lot size, because certainly a five acre lot, if a half acre lot can handle two adequately, then a five acre lot should be able to handle more than two. Uh, and so I would ask you to, to consider that, so that those that have larger lots would have more opportunity. Uh, in direct response to the question, I think two on a half acre lot is a good starting point. And then with time, we'll see if that's, needs to go up or down, or stay the same. Uh, and then to the other question, are they cleaner than other animals? I guess, what's the criteria for cleanliness? Do they bathe? Do they? Um, they're, they're, they are cleaner than perceived would be my answer. But when properly cared for, they're, they're a clean animal. Uh, and in, in some respects, this has been explained cleaner than many of our common farm animals. Well, they're the cleanest, I don't know that I would say that, but any other thoughts for me?
Thank you.
Well, thanks, so thank you.
Thank you.
So would I actually add one? Would the, uh, the two per half acre apply throughout, so at five acres, we're looking at twenty pigs?
Well, I, I think you could use, i- if we're saying two is a good number for a half acre, you could use the multiplier effect and say, so four per acre, and if you've got five acres, then.
So just continue it on through to two per half acre.
And have a proportionate to what the two per half acre would be.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Beck.
Thank you. Boy, that really brings up a, a good point. Thank you, because we, we talked about rural, real residential, but in all this discussion of points and smells and animals, I, I didn't, uh, think enough or even at all about the different lot sizes within that, so I'm wondering, I guess I would need to review the staff report to see, well, I guess we would need to put some, some criteria in place.
Probably in place on a five acre lot for horses, for horses, for cows. Same thing.
Subject to the points.
Yeah.
Subject to the points, yeah.
But then what we're saying is whether it's a five acre lot or a half acre lot, you can have two.
Still a multiplier, right?
Well, if we, if we say, if we say right now that there's no more than two swine per lot, it doesn't matter whether it's a half acre or five acre, you got two pigs.
Right.
So, so could we? What, what I was just gonna ask you is, what would, what would happen if we modified your motion to say instead, and we changed the words, no more than two swine per lot, no more than two swine per half acre?
Twenty thousand square feet to be more than one.
But it's two swine per lot.
Now we're up to swine on a five acre lot.
Yeah, but you can have that many horses, or, or, well, or you'd have, you could have ten horses, you'd have that many, goats or sheep.
So, so including a multiplier on that, could we say pigs are eight points, but you can use a maximum of so many points? I don't know, I was just trying to do the math in my head for, uh, for a half acre lot, it's not, it's not happening.
I mean, there's a, there is a, there's a point here.
So I, I did, I did actually consider this as I was, uh, writing the report, um, and I think the simplest way to put it is, uh, to kind of take what Councilmember Southworth has already said, this is just a starting point. Often when you introduce a potential, uh, use that, that could be perceived or be a real nuisance, you, you start at the baseline and, and over time you make adjustments. I hate for, for us to go so fast and so quick that the pendulum swings back the other way and the door closes. Um, as you look at this map of the city, there are a lot of rural residential areas just kind of sprinkled through, um, a lot of the older part of this, of the city. I mean, we've been kind of focused out on the fifty-four ninety area, uh, this evening with, with the other item. But if you look, we have a lot of, of the older parts of town on the east side that have rural residential kind of tucked in, um, you know, within the, the fabric of, of our quote unquote regular subdivisions that don't have animal rights. Uh, some of those lots are acre, you know, acre and a half, and they, they could potentially, if you go down this road, have more than two pigs, and we could have them potentially, those, those concerns and those complaints, you know, be reported to our code enforcement officers, which would probably, uh, end up going to our city council members, they'll hear about the complaints, and then the pendulum would swing. And so I kind of mold this over, all these things in my mind as I was writing the report, and, and so that's why you don't see that component, that option listed. You could certainly bring it up though, and make that party recommendation, and, and I can consider that, uh, as I write the report for the council, so.
Well, council's gonna get the minutes anyway, so they'll see the discussion we had.
Well, what if we put a, what if we put a cap that's higher than two, but not twenty pigs, you know, just to start out, so it still feels safe, but if you have five acres, maybe we cap it at six pigs, you know? So, I don't know.
What if I have, what if I have four point seven eight acres?
Then you can cut one of those pigs in half.
Well, so here's where it starts to get complicated, if you don't have these hut UI lot sizes that we can squeeze this into.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a suggestion.
Please.
Uh, we've had a lot of new information, and rather than try and hash it out, would it make sense to give it back to the staff and have them take another couple of weeks to process all this new information, including some of these other code sections that have been identified, and then bring it back?
Thoughts? Commissioner Jacob?
Uh, I'm, I'm actually pretty okay with the motion that's on the table, and, um, I'm, I'm, if, kind of the question was in such an argumentous process, I'd say let's call the question, but I just, it's called a question.
Question's been called.
Question's not called, we're gonna call the question, actually, technically.
Well, you don't have to hold on, anybody can call the question, anyway. Uh, so, we've got motion on the table, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero, and hopefully the, hopefully city council will carefully review the minutes of our meeting and see that there was additional points of discussion. Uh, that concludes our agenda for this evening, unless there's anything else we, uh, we need to talk about. I didn't take a motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Uh, hearing opposition to that, we stand adjourned until, uh, October sixth, two thousand fifteen. Commissioner Green.
So I can't tell, I can't believe we spent.